And it's February the 10th, Room 1010. It's 8:30 a.m. in the morning and before we really get into the meat of why we're here today, why don't I let Clyde Williams come on up and speak? Come on up. Anybody else who wants to fill out a public speaker card, they should do so and give it to the clerk over there on the left.
Oh, good morning. My name is Dr. Clyde Williams. A 25-year-old, 25-year resident of El Cerrano, 4115 Barrett Road. I was not really talking to as a public comment, but as a comment on the item one.
Okay, you know what? You're right. I'll hang on to it. Do you want to speak now?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead and speak now on item one and then I'll do public comment later. I'm sorry, I missed that part.
I have reviewed the document that was supposed to be presented this morning. The central issue is page 15 and page 18. The uncertainty drivers and the stochastic analysis. Does anyone really know what the other word for stochastic analysis is? It's called Monte Carlo. And at this time in the city's budget and in the U.S. economy, playing Monte Carlo with such a very large project is not reasonable, especially given the amount of time that's been given to analysis of it. All of the factors in the uncertainty drivers, pages 15 and 18, are on the low side. There is no documentation to justify the low-side estimates and there's no information provided as to how they came to those numbers. Therefore, the analysis of the cost per kilowatt hour is on the very low side. So therefore, playing Monte Carlo with a budget of over a billion dollars and with a lot of people having invested time and training into solar installation, it doesn't seem like a reasonable effort on the part of the city at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Okay, so, Mr. CLA, if you would go over item one.
Good morning, Madam Chair, I'm Robert with CLA's office. Item number one relates to the comprehensive solar plan. This item was continued from last week's meeting. You wanted to continue it, or the committee did, for the purposes of fully vetting the item in committee. We have a staff presentation for Department of Water and Power. I'm not sure if their staff is...
All right. Who's here from the Department of Water and Power?
Peltola will be joining us in a moment. He's stuck in traffic.
Okay.
Good morning, Wendy Yancy with Water and Power. First of all, thank you for this opportunity to continue this dialogue about the DWP's comprehensive solar plan, including Measure B. This morning, so that we can answer all the questions that are posed, and again, just continue this dialogue, I have Mike Webster, who's actually the manager of the RPS program, who will be leading the implementation of the plan. Mike Coia, who's over construction, who will be able to answer questions as it relates to the actual construction and the hiring of staff to make this plan come to fruition. And then, as Joe mentioned, Jeff Peltola is our acting CFO, and he'll be able to address the financial concerns about this plan. So with that, Jeff is parking. He just gave me a call. And so we can either, we can open with prepared remarks, or we can just dive into questions.
Why don't we start with questions, if that's good with you? And then that'll help us cut to, you know, cut the chase.
Thank you.
I think I'd like for you to review, you know, for those listening and for the benefit of the committee, the comprehensive solar plan, how it will be funded through ECAF or base rate increases, and then give us a couple of the scenarios that are being considered. And also tell us how much of the cost can ECAF absorb.
Yeah, I would say that the CFO would be best able to, if we could, Madam Chair, if we could beg your indulgence to wait for Mr. Peltola's arrival for that one. That's specifically the kinds of questions we wanted him to field for us today.
Okay. Can you...
Break down, what should we ask him?
Oh, these are the technical fellows, I'm sorry, councilmember.
Just like for what's, like for build-out versus...
Build-out and actual management of the solar program is Mr. Webster, and Mr. Coia is the gentleman.
And do you know how close he is?
He's in the parking lot, man.
Okay.
Apologies.
Um...
But I did have something I wanted to share with you.
Okay, he's here now.
Very good.
Okay, good. I know, you got stuck in traffic. Okay, great, okay.
I'll get my...
Okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, would you repeat your question, please?
Yeah, you want to get a minute to, are you okay?
Oh yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, great. Okay, just, just let's, let's go back a little bit. Tell us how the plant, solar plan will be funded through ECAF or base rate increase. Provide us with a few scenarios that your, the DWP is considering, and how much of the cost can ECAF absorb.
The specifics of how we'll fund it, we haven't yet determined. Right now, looking at the plan that Huron developed, it would come as a purchase power agreement, which certainly right now, that falls under ECAF. And one of the things that's happening in, as a result of the economic crisis, in line with oil prices dropping, natural gas prices are dropping. So that's helping us a lot on the ECAF, funding of the ECAF to ensure we don't go over how much, because as you know, we have that mitigating step of no more than .1 cent per kilowatt hour per quarter. So we're still looking at the best way to fund that. If I, you know, I hesitate to say it's going to be funded under ECAF. Right now, that would, that, that looks like to be the best way. To the degree, when we look at this and the extra dollar, and I know there's been a lot of discussion about the $1, and does that fund the entire thing? What we're looking at is the solar will displace other power. And it's really a game-changing event when you look at these costs. 12 cents, Councilman Garcetti, you have made numerous comments, I've seen in the press, about other power, the costs are going to be increasing as we go forward. And that's what we're really looking at, is what is that displacement? The 565 gigawatt hours of energy is displacing other energy that doesn't come at the right time as well. Part of our trouble is we need to make sure that the power follows the demands by our customer. Solar comes in in the middle of the day. It may not go exactly with our peak, but it comes in the middle of the day when we can use it. Other power can come in off-peak, and what we end up doing is we have to use that if we don't have customer demand. We'll use it at our Castaic Pump Storage Unit, and we'll pump the water up the hill to use it when we need it. Get about a 40% loss when doing that. So that's another benefit of this, and that's what mitigates this, the rate impacts. The other part of the, I'm sorry, the...
The other, how much can an ECAF absorb under your...
And again, that is the biggest, the biggest difference on that is the natural gas costs. And right now, we had a plan, in our, in our plan before, we were, we were looking at this year, somewhere about a $200 million under collection. And right now, because of natural gas costs dropping, and they've dropped precipitously, from an average, we were planning for the '08-'09 budget, a natural gas cost of close to $8.64. And today, what we're looking at is close to $4. And that gives us about a $200 million. So right now, we're not under-collecting at all, and in fact, it's going up. I'd have to look at specific scenarios to tell you how much of that will be in ECAF under what those under-collections would be.
Okay, let me ask you another question. The potential impact of this proposal on the existing transmission system, and whether or not it can handle additional capacity, or does it need to be expanded?
Maybe I'll let Mike answer that. Repeat the question for me.
Okay. Also, Ms. Grue is here, since we commenced the meeting, along with Mr. Garcetti. The potential impact of the proposal to the existing transmission system, can it handle additional capacity, or does it need to be expanded?
The transmission system locally can handle most of the 400 megawatts. Now, there's a part of it that would be located potentially outside of the basin. That transmission would have to be expanded to bring that in.
Where's that located?
There's discussions right now about a location at Palmdale Airport. And so we would need to build transmission to that facility.
Now, I guess, and these are notes from the Department of Water and Power, Barron Ridge Renewable Transmission Project will meet additional transmission needs associated with the solar program. Are you familiar with that?
Not Barron Ridge. This transmission would have to hook in south of Barron Ridge.
Okay, this project will upgrade the transmission system from the Tehachapi and Mojave Deserts to the city. The expanded transmission system is expected to be in service by 2013.
That is all, that is all correct, and...
And where is Barron Ridge located?
Now, Barron Ridge is over, it's close to Mojave, okay? And the Palmdale Airport is further away. And so, right now, the view is we would connect along a different path, closer to the city of Los Angeles. We wouldn't go out to Barron Ridge and come in, we would come in a different path. But these are all questions that are being analyzed right now, as we're going through the implementation plan on various routes that we might consider.
Okay, now, the report noted that an additional level of undetermined capacity upgrades need to be, to come online to meet the large-scale solar program needs beyond what's already planned. Can you give me some reaction to that?
If we're talking about the portion that's out in Palmdale, that is the portion that we would have to build additional transmission capacity for.
Is that the level, that is the undetermined capacity upgrade?
That's, that would be the undetermined capacity upgrade to Palmdale, depending on how many megawatts are potentially available at that location.
I want to ask maybe two more questions, I'm going to break, and then let my colleagues and we'll go around again. Regarding residential solar, the, the cost of an average solar power roof system, you can tell us that? The installation cost, the equipment cost, and ongoing maintenance to the customer, DWP and third-party developers? And if you want me to break that down, I can do that again.
I think we're on question, we're on report.
Yeah, the average, yeah, the average size of a residential solar, I believe, is 10, 10 kilowatts. So if you're looking at the installation cost of that, would be 3,300. Now, one of the things that you see, the 3,300, that takes into account economies of scale, that takes into account the new technology, which is thin-film technology. So when I say 3,300, in reality, you're probably going to look at a higher cost for that residential, because they don't get those economies of scale.
Now, you, when you, I know you probably looked at the report, too. So then it says an average residential is 4 kilowatts. Installation cost approximately 38,000. Generally, 2/3 of the cost is for equipment, 1/3 is for installation. And then DWP is looking, considering providing an incentive of about 15,600. And then, of course, the customer, in addition to that, could be eligible for a 30% federal investment tax credit, which is the equivalent of another, say, 11,400. So that might leave a net, approximately a net out-of-pocket expenditure of 11,000. Now, the annual electric savings from the system would be about 800 to 900 annually. And then, over 13 years, you pay back for what you had to lay out. I just wanted to get your, your review and...
So I'm sorry, Madam Chair, did you just want a validation that these numbers are correct?
I just want to get the department's perspective on these numbers, whether or not you, because you know, they, they, obviously, it's apples to oranges, because he was analyzing at 10 kilowatts, they analyze at 4 kilowatts. Just give me your reaction to that, see if they're way off base, or are they in the ballpark?
Well, Mr. Glaz from our solar team prepared these, and just in a cursory review, they look, they look accurate for the, for a kilowatt installation.
Let's talk about the breakdown, then, okay?
Sure.
Let's go through that again. Trying to get to how much it's going to cost folks, basically, for a residential installation.
Right.
I mean, your numbers don't have to be down to the penny, but...
Right.
Give me a range if you can.
And, and so if we're looking here at, at 38,000, what this is assuming is really, I would, I would call historical costs, $38,000 for a 4-kilowatt system, so you're looking at 90, 9,500 per KW. That's much higher cost, and that's more historical cost, where you're looking at the, a rooftop system, which costs more, because you've got to go up on the roof, you've got to, you've got to put the equipment in so you can put it on there. And this is really silicon PV that you're putting in, and you're losing all the economies of scale because of the smaller size of it. As you look at the, the new technologies coming in, I, I think this cost is going to be driven down in today's market. I think these manufacturers, their cost is going down as well. What I've seen historically throughout our, throughout our system, all of ours, is roughly 7,500 per KW, which I think would be a better, you know, going-forward number, where this is looking at really historical. So at that, you're looking at 30,000. And I, and I think that may, in today's market, that, that, as you go forward and look at a future system, it may be closer to that.
And then, the incentive that the department may, may be able to provide, is that, is that in place yet, or is that still something in the works?
Yeah, that would be the SB1 program, Madam Chair, and...
So that is in place now?
Absolutely. It's been in place since 2006.
And then the federal investment tax credit?
That's, that's also been extended for another eight years.
And does the department enable users to apply?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so you have the program?
And the discount between the two are, are SB1 monies, which are actually about $4.80 a watt, and they're higher. I think the state's requirement is about 240, and the investor-owned utilities are offering the statutory level of $2.40 a watt. We're offering 480 in order to try to prime the pump a little bit here in, in Los Angeles. Between the SB1 monies and the federal tax credits, you're looking at about a 50% discount off the capital cost, maybe a little bit higher, depending on the size of the installation. And the prices that I had seen for installations are, they could be as much as $60,000, even higher. It really depends on the amount of customization required. You know, every installation on a home has to be customized in terms of, you know, the size and the angle and whatnot. So it's, they lose a lot of the economies of scale, not only in terms of size, but the amount of customization required for a residential installation.
Okay, and then the projection of being able to, a system being able to pay for itself within 13 years, is that understatement, overstatement? Is that realistic?
That's about what, yeah, it, with the tax credits and the SB1 monies where they're set right now, 13 to 15 years is about what they're getting, Madam Chair.
Okay, just one quick question, and I want to go on to Mr. Garcetti and Ms. Grue, and then we'll come back around again. Just give us a summary of what the department feels the low-income or disadvantaged customer will feel with respect to the comprehensive solar plan, both in program participation and in employment incentives.
I can speak to the, as far as participation in the solar program. One of the things that we're looking at right now is a methodology of utilizing the SunShares program to help mitigate costs for our low-income customers. So we would build a solar plant, and, and the output of that solar plant, we would net against the costs for our low-income customers. We're looking at that right now, and I think that's going to be the best way that our low-income customers will be able to participate, both low-income and lifeline customers. And again, that, that, they'll get the economies of scale, because we'll be building a large plant. We're essentially going to be doing it through a net metering of what that plant output is versus what the low-income and lifeline qualifying customers, what their bill is.
You going to reevaluate your incentive programs for low and moderate income residents?
The, I'm not, do you know about the SB1? When I'm talking about there, that's all going to be funded through part of our, our low-income, which is under our public benefits program. So there would be, that would be totally funded for the low-income and lifeline customers.
The answer's yes, ma'am, Madam Chair.
Okay, and then what about reevaluating the current department discount rate for qualifying low-income customers? Is there any consideration being given to that?
We've actually, since the last hearing we had with regard to rates, there was a considerable amount of discussion about what we're doing with regard to our low-income customers. And my understanding is, at that time, we had about 187,000 customers in our low-income program, and Mr. Chen in our, has increased that number, I think it's 204,000. So there's been an increase in the threshold, I believe, in terms of dollars, that would allow a family to qualify, as well as the outreach effort, in order to make sure that customers who do qualify are in fact participating in our program. So there's been a, a very aggressive program. Over the last three months, they've added, you know, 25,000 customers to our low-income program.
Okay. Okay, I'll take a break for a second, Mr. Garcetti and then Ms. Grue.
Thank you. Let me start by thanking the Chair for continuing this to allow us to have more robust discussion. And I also want to thank folks that are here, members of the public that have come as well. And I'll just reiterate a couple of things I said last time. One, it's wonderful to see so many people. I think there's more discussion on solar in the last few months than there's been in the last few years, or even decades, here in Los Angeles. And for a long time, that was a somewhat out-there and lonely place to be. And now, it's really not so much a question of if, people are really focused on how we get a solar future here in Los Angeles. And as someone who, who pushed five years ago for a, a close to 100-megawatt program, to see folks who have been in the past opposed to that really come together to say, it is time for us to do that. And to see the department come forward with a multiplicity of ways of doing that. To me, I've always believed competition is going to be the best way to drive these prices down. And that the publicly-owned and operated piece is a very important competitor to the private sector, just as the private sector always reminds us vice versa. And in fact, it has been the history of the Department of Water and Power, that which we own and operate, where there's not a profit given to shareholders, but essentially folded back into ratepayers, has always been a cheaper way to go. You can find parts where DWP doesn't operate with as great efficiencies as the private sector, but taken on as a whole, it is a cheaper deal for our ratepayers to own and operate. Similarly, though, even though I hear what we're doing in terms of, or what we, what the case is with residential programs, which don't have the economies of scale, which are more expensive, we've really heard out there that people do want to participate in this, and I think it's a, it's an important part of a green future, not to just have it be abstracted somewhere out there in the basin, on warehouses and in deserts, but also right there where we live. And that is the best way to distribute locally as well, without having to build anything else at those peak-power moments when we can have reliability. As I said last week as well, you know, for me, my very simple mission for the department, since I've been on this committee and even before, is to deliver clean and reliable energy at a reasonable price. Those three, I guess, legs of the stool are, on which I put all policy and judge it. And, you know, the cost, to me, the question of the plan is not so much whether we should do it again, it's whether the costs are right and the capacity is there. So I want to dig into both of those, the cost and the capacity. Because the, on the cost front, I mean, I know that there's been a consensus in this council, there's been a consensus, I believe, by and large, with the people of Los Angeles, and certainly the mayor and the board of commissioners, that we need to do this. Now, I've heard some more strident comments from some commissioners saying, you know, that we shouldn't worry about the costs at all. I don't take that radical position. I think it's important to look at the costs, and always to be responsible about that. But I also know that our, our future, in terms of a greener future, is very important in a way that's responsible. And, you know, it's, it's ironic right now, as you're talking about the natural gas prices being lower, that we may be able to use some of that savings right now to invest in what we know is going to be the long-term, cheap way of going, which is a sustainable way, as opposed to the health costs, the global warming costs, and everything else that... else that go with a carbon-based way of generating our electricity. Couple of things on the costs, well, first, let me start, actually, with capacity. My big worry, and I want to state this very publicly, and it's not a reflection of anybody at this table, but because it is a pretty seismic shift for the department, one that a lot of us in the environmental community have been advocating for a long time, it's not the way any utility is set up to do things. And we're talking about one of the largest public works, projects, and private partnerships with this plan, that this department has seen in probably a half-century. You know, we have had, this department has been defined at those great moments, bringing water to Los Angeles, building up our generating capacity, you know, and this is, in some ways, that third great moment for the department. And that's not easily done just by having a little, you know, part of the department looking at that, it has to be a cultural change throughout. And there's always resistance to change, so I expect that within the department, some people saying, why are we doing green at all? I can get you some coal really cheap today. And I also expect some folks to say, well, we want to continue to peripheralize this as the green part of the department, not as the core of what the department is. So, I'm interested, you know, in digging in. I know that AECOM has now been retained to do analysis of the ability to do work, and we'll be looking at that very closely, but my first question is, do you believe that that shift is happening, and what evidence do we have of really ramping up? Because, you know, when we had analysis, initially, very cursory analysis, of what had been proposed for the piece that would be owned and operated by DWP, I had great worries about doing that in four years, getting a hundred megawatts of solar out next year, and that, which is precisely why we changed and stretched that out and ramped it up. Do we believe that capacity is there, and what is being done, you know, for any of you right now, to really build that up as the core of this department? You can tell by the heads, because three heads went this way, so...
Three heads went that way.
Mr. Webster, I think, is going to be the answer.
The new guy.
Mr. Alakon has joined us.
And if you can give us your background as well, if your point on this stuff, to let people know, you know, how this can be done.
Yeah, my name is Mike Webster, and I am newly appointed to the Renewable Portfolio Standard. I've served ten years in our wholesale marketing, from ninety-five all the way through the energy crisis, doing all kinds of wholesale deals and green energy deals, and working on transmission systems, so I know how to operate the system. Now, what I've done over the last month is we've started the AECOM implementation process, and they are actually helping us look at that. Now, what I'm sensing is that we're starting to mobilize the entire management team at Water and Power to recognize that this is our mission, and I don't sense that it's being sidelined at all. And what AECOM is actually helping with, through doing what's called the program review, and interviewing all the department management team to find out where we're at, is bringing up the awareness throughout the entire management team that this is important, and asking the right questions, is how are we going to get this done? So, I think that we're starting to ramp up, but it is going to take a process. It's going to take time to fully embrace and move forward, but I'm sensing that that is happening at the department. And that was, I think, your first question, is what is the culture like, and how are we going to change this culture to fully embrace this program?
And Councilmember, if I could, on the culture of turning to the green, DWP, I've been there for twenty-five years as an engineer-driven organization. When we look at stuff, the engineering want to look at cost-effective solutions for the ratepayers of Los Angeles. When we look at the cost that we're looking at here, really with technology changes, with the construction changes that we're going to put in, because of market conditions right now, quite honestly, I think what you'll find is a lot of engineers at DWP are excited about doing this, because it does serve the green purposes of the city and of the policymakers such as yourself, but really, what it also does is it serves the ratepayers of Los Angeles by giving them a cost-effective solution. That's really the benefit, and I think that's, there's very little culture change for DWP to go towards a cost-effective solution, and when you look at this compared to what you see in the market, it's very cost-effective.
The breakdown of the table that reaches the twelve-eighty megawatt goal, and you have the SunShares, the residential rebate, the feed-in tariffs, DWP-owned, and the quote-unquote Right now, the twenty-one megawatts for residential, what is the growth net from '08 to '09? I know that's cumulative, so we're starting at twenty-one. Do we know...
I don't have the answer to that.
How many we're adding this year?
I don't have the answer to that.
We have to get back to that.
Okay. Because I think we move another, from my calculation, six hundred homes is the goal between '09 and '10, to get the six additional megawatts to go from twenty-one to twenty-seven, and the nine hundred homes the next year, a thousand homes, fourteen hundred homes, eighteen hundred homes, is that roughly correct?
Right, right. These are the projected numbers you're talking about, Councilmember?
Yeah.
Councilmember, yes, yes. Those are the projections that we have, based on our expectations, based on what we're seeing in the marketplace, the prices obviously coming in the proper direction, you know, the reextension of the tax credits. There was, it was actually almost a moratorium on the customer side, waiting for the tax credits to be reinstated, so a lot of folks were waiting to see whether or not that would be extended, and once that extended, we noticed there was a pickup in activity as far as customer demand and requests for installations.
Councilmember Smith and I introduced a motion, looked at what Berkeley is doing, and I know there might have been some legal impediments of ways of funding the residential side of stuff through loans. I mean, when you look at that thirteen-year payback, or, as most folks have told me, it's probably going to be closer to about an eight-year payback, looking at the price of photovoltaics coming down, that still is eight years that somebody has to front money, and if there's a way of kind of a low-interest or no-interest loan from a larger entity, or paying for that through the actual utilities that's out there, that would really scale up the residential side of people being able to do that. Is that something we're exploring?
Absolutely. Yeah, there's a whole number of financial options that we're exploring, including the Berkeley model. Yes, sir.
So, I mean, to me, I'd like to underscore that. I think that for us to be getting, you know, a thousand new homes a few years from now, to actually be able to afford this, and to get to what Ms. Perry was saying, and it's been strong interest to me, too, that this not just be for wealthy homeowners, but those, you know, either property owners who have apartments, or working-class, middle-class homeowners, we're going to have to find that mechanism in there. On that subject as well, the very lowest income for public housing, some of the work that we've been doing in Washington on the stimulus bill, a big piece of this is energy efficiency in public housing. And I was speaking with our HUD secretary, and I'm actually going to be talking to him later today as well, about how HUD can lead, and not just change out, which is good, don't get me wrong, but change out a bunch of light bulbs in our public housing units, but actually make these models of green living. And where the city, and I don't have any, I know Mr. Alakon does, Ms. Perry does, Mr. Parks and Ms. Hahn, and I think Mr. Weisner have the preponderance of public housing. As we're looking at redeveloping public housing, you should get with the head of our housing authority here, and see where those dollars, we might not be able to partner, and get some of the DWP-owned pieces into our public housing, especially we're redeveloping. Because if you look at the stimulus bill, it is tens of billions of dollars that are going into energy efficiency for public housing. It's one of the largest chunks that nobody is looking at, and somebody else is going to grab if we don't, so look at that as well. In terms of some of the cost and capacity, and then I'll turn it over, so we can continue going around and have other questions back as well, the Huron report that's focused on the DWP-owned and operated piece, which mirrored much of the research that I did, I know you stated this was, you know, four hundred-plus hours of work and ten thousand models of looking at the price. When we're looking at the average increase to a residential customer, which they estimated to be, I think, ninety cents to a dollar-five per month, for the DWP-owned and operated four hundred megawatts over time, when we're looking at that cost, how does that compare to if we didn't do DWP-owned and operated, what you believe us buying other green energy costs would increase a customer's bill? Because for me, that's the net to finally, if we're going to have full information for all of us that are assessing, you know, what, how to vote on Measure B, for all of us assessing whether or not we want to go into a SunShares program, for those of us assessing all those pieces of what's the best way to do this, it is not just ninety cents to a dollar-five compared to zero. I believe it's a ninety cents to a dollar-five compared to other forms of green energy, unless some of us don't want to do green energy at all, which I hope we don't anymore.
And that dollar impact, or the ninety cents in the range, what that incremental amount is, is compared to our existing financial plan that was approved at the beginning of this fiscal year, and in line with our twenty percent by 2010, and our other 2020 goal, thirty-five percent. And what this does is, we're producing roughly five hundred and sixty-five gigawatt-hours of energy, and so it's replacing that other energy, and we looked at a variety of different energies and technologies that we would replace to look at what that range is. So, that dollar is the increment, that is the incremental between doing that and doing the solar.
And one last question on the cost as well. The savings that you mentioned on the lower price of the natural gas, and I don't know if we're buying out futures into that or not, as we, I think we usually do hedge that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
What does that do for our overall increase? In other words, if that plan had it at almost more than double, I think you said, rate, what does that open up in terms of these costs? Does that bring it down to potentially eighty or seventy cents net per customer, if we're able to lock that in right now?
The way I understand your question is, yeah, it's interesting, actually, out in the future, people are looking at, if I can find it here, our future gas costs, they are assuming that gas costs out into the future are going to go back up to where they were before. So, if you look out in the thirteen-fourteen market, it returns up above six dollars for gas, so that drives the cost back up, and then that's basically in line with what everybody thinks is going to happen with the economic activity.
But we can hedge that.
We can hedge that for the six dollars, and we're certainly taking advantage of the next couple of years of the low gas prices.
We're going to take a break. Mr. Alakon has to go, and then we'll go to Ms. Grue and to Mr. Kargus.
Yeah, I have to get to Education and Neighborhood Council Committee, but before I leave, I just wanted to make a statement that, as an elected official, you would like to be able to make decisions that are fully informed, and have all the answers answered, and all the questions raised, but sometimes you just have to go with what you feel. And the case here, I think the Huron report actually validates the council action in many ways, and even though the council acted in good conscience on a hunch that this is the right way to go, I'm glad that Mr. Garcetti mentioned the stimulus plan, because the fact that the President is including a healthy dose of green economics into the plan is indicative, again, that we made the right decision. Because if, in fact, greening is going to work from an economic perspective, it's going to work because of the volume of effort and investment that we make into greening. One of the worst things we could do is say that we're not ready to go, because it's too costly. The fact is, it will always be costly if everybody has that attitude, but if everybody changes their attitude, and I believe under this President, and already indicated in his stimulus package, is now's the time. And even though we may have, maybe other partners could have been included in a greater way, the fact is that this is a good proposal, this is a good measure that will help stimulate our economy, that will help us move forward with the economics of greening, that require economies of scale, and, I believe, will set a good course for the city of Los Angeles to get major gains from a federal administration that finally gets it. And so, I think this report validates the council and mayor's position on putting this measure on the ballot, and I believe that sometimes, as a politician, you just have to bite the bullet, take the shots, and then make the decision that may be against the grain, but in fact, over time, demonstrates real leadership. Thank you.
Ms. Grue?
I want to add on to the question that Eric asked, it was actually my top question as well, as we look at the cost. Now, in your formulating your projections going forward, I mean, as we see each state, you know, in the union, actually adopting same kind of legislation as to having more renewable energy, as well as the President talking about that, too, about requirements to do that. Now, when you did your original modeling a year ago, and looking at getting twenty percent by 2010, and getting to the thirty-five percent by 2020, was that in concert with understanding implementation of AB32, some of the other costs associated? Because if we did nothing, if we didn't do any of the solar programs here at all, we would still be required to be purchasing renewable energy, correct?
Correct.
And the argument has been, is it better to purchase renewable energy on the open market, or to have a portion of your renewable energy be controlled by the entity, and I think Eric mentioned this as well, that historically, the DWP has been able to have lower rates relative to owning some of their own assets. So, as we go forward and we look at the cost-benefit ratio, there's clearly a global understanding of creating more renewable energy, but from our perspective, maybe if you could just add on a little bit then?
Again, when we look at all this from the planning perspective, and even determining what the incremental cost is, we have to look at making sure we can serve the capacity of all of our customers, because come, you know, those hot Julys, those hot Augusts that we've experienced the last couple of years, we've got to make sure we have that power, because that's the absolute disasters, we don't want to be able to do that. But we want to do that in concert with the green goals that have been set by this body, as well as our board and the mayor. And when we look at this, that's what we take into account, is how much cost will it be for each one of these different technologies? And it's going to be a portfolio, those technologies, so that we have that capacity to meet our customer needs, and in concert with all the laws that you talked about. So, it's really a complex thing we're doing right now, because we're changing the whole way we operate, and we're having relatively large portions of our generating portfolio that we know in the future, as a result of recent laws, we're not going to be able to continue with those. So, when we look at something like this, and, again, as I told the general manager, these costs that you're seeing, both in Huron, and I think Joe has brought copies of recent newspaper articles as well, they're game changers. In the past, we've looked at costs that have really just been too high, and have too higher-rate impacts. When we look at this, this is at a cost that, again, is in line relatively with most of the renewables, but, again, comes and helps us during the peak period.
And, I mean, I think, as you stated three or four years ago, this would, we would not really have contemplated this, because of the costs associated with it. But as I was looking through some historical documents, it looked like, as well, that the department had always had some intention of owning and operating and installing some of their own solar, is that correct?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
And, again, if it's a technology, the department wants to be aware with those technologies, we want to work with those technologies, so we're familiar with it, with the maintenance needs, and we've been doing that in the solar, but now you're looking at different technologies with the thin film and others coming in that are lowering the cost quite a bit, and making it more viable.
Just ask a couple more questions, Jan, before we go kind of the round again. Two questions that have been asked is, one, capacity of the marketplace to provide us with the film, and where that's coming from, how we'll be able to do that, and then the second question is, not only the marketplace for the product, but also to staffing and being able to handle that. My comment has been, you know, we're at a ten percent unemployment rate potentially, so there is a marketplace for that, but it is about management in the department utilizing that as well. If you could answer those two.
The one I think, in the Huron report, if you go to page ten, if you have it, it has a real good chart that shows on a global basis, the supply and demand of the photovoltaic cells, with the blue line being, and what that does is, again, shows where we're looking at in our program, when you get that blue line, which is the supply, above the green...
Do we have extra copies?
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the public, by any chance? Just, I know, folks. Are there any that are out there? Oh, I see, you guys have some? Okay, okay. I just want to make sure people can follow along.
Everybody has this thing?
Oh, colorized, yeah, the blue. Blue, okay, got it. That's blue, okay.
I think we just need...
Go ahead, I'm...
Just need one other down here, and then if anybody else in the audience wants, we've got some extras here.
And it's page ten.
I got one.
And that really shows that there's, part of Huron's analysis shows that there's a significant, in the '09, increase of the supply of the cells, going up to over twenty-five-hundred megawatts per year, and I know a lot of work was done in that area. As far as your other question on the labor, maybe Mike, Mike or Mike, either Mike can handle it.
So, just before we skip over that, and I know, and some of my conversations with solar companies, the fact that the city of Los Angeles is going to embark on a very ambitious program has made them, not only economies of scale, but the potential marketplace even growing greater than some of these projections would have been because of this new engagement of the one megawatts.
Right, right. And, again, what that does for DWP customers is...
program has made them, not only economies of scale, but the potential marketplace even growing greater than some of these projections would have been because of this new engagement of the one megawatt.
Right, right. And again, what that does for DWP customers is it lowers the cost because of the scale of it.
Yes, in regards to your question on staffing, you know, what we are looking at is partnering with our local labor unions, and we've gone out to some of their training sites where they are currently training a lot of people to be able to be, participate in this program and help us out as solar installers. And so, and actually, we've gone out with, partnered with Local 11, already looking at getting outreach out to the communities to go ahead and take their course, and they have like a four-week course, but they actually have a real quick two-day course that you can get somebody up and running on as far as the basics for installation. So we are looking at getting some outreach where people know that, you know, if we embark on this program, that would be the avenue that we could bring them in through the, to hire them as an exempt worker.
And are there some community colleges that are also doing this kind of training as well?
Right, LA Trade Tech is also doing this, yes.
I have others, but I'll pass. All right, Mr. Cardenas?
Yeah, thank you. I want to put things in a little bit of perspective and my concern on conflicting information or reports that seem to be looked at by the department. This is the real report, and other reports don't seem to be accurate. That reminds me of when I chaired the committee, when it was a different committee. For example, when there was a project, a mitigation project, that when David Friedman was the head of the Department of Water and Power, there was a report that, or he reported to the city council and to the commission, that would be about $150 million mitigation project up north. And then there happened to be a Parsons, I think it was Parsons, report that actually said, you know, guesstimations, because it's kind of new technology and a new realm in which they're going to be entering into this massive, massive mitigation of square miles around a lake that had been emptied up north, environmental issue. And the Parsons report, very respected organization, actually said that it could cost an upwards of $400 million. And lo and behold, we blew past the $150 million, and that project today, and I think you know the answer to this, Joe, that particular project is, in fact, beyond $400 million in mitigation.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Lo and behold.
Exactly. Now, what does the department have to say about what you're telling us today and telling the voters today versus what we're going to have to tell them five and 10 years from now when we're able to look at the actuals, not the projected, but the actuals of how much, in this case, instead of a mitigation, we're talking about a new kind of energy that we're going to depend on, and there's a cost element to it and a timing element to it, as how long it's going to take to get it done. Timing reminds me of another one. A previous mayor, before this current mayor, again, when I chaired the committee, we were told that there was, I think it's called Pine Tree Project, the wind project, that that project had a certain scale, a certain expected start date, and then we were going to actually own it, run it, and get this energy on the line. Where's that project? And is that project going beyond the timeline that it was supposed to? And what is the cost? Is the cost going beyond what it was, what was expected in that project?
Councilmember, maybe if I could, the difference in the cost that we've all seen in all the different reports, if I could maybe just walk you through that and where those different costs come from. There's three main costs or three main drivers to the cost for solar because obviously it's a capital intensive. You put the solar asset in, and then it's going to be producing power for the next 25 years.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, exactly.
And don't forget to tell us about our expectations in the report that you're depending on that tells us what the return rate is going to be and the efficiency rates of the actual product. Because it's my understanding, after working on this issue for over 10 years now, both in the legislature and on the city council, that our efficiency rates are always below what we're being told by the manufacturers. And that has a tremendous, tremendous effect on whether or not the return on investment is, in fact, what it's supposed to be, the timelines it takes to do so. And then also, please don't forget to tell us why we expect that this particular product is going to be more true to its word than every other product to date.
Okay, well, let me walk through the three main, and I think, you know, if you have the Huron report, and it may be helpful to look at page 15 of the Huron report. The three main drivers, the first one is total installed cost. And if you look on Huron Report, page 15, you can see it has hardware and installation costs, and it has a base case of 370, which is three dollars and 70 cents per watt. In the past, that has been seven dollars and 50 cents. We were talking about that earlier. And that's really the technological changes that have come about and put in ground-based large systems where you get the economies of scale. And this is really one of the keys that changes that cost per kilowatt hour that you cited, is having that 370 versus in the past, which spends 750, and that's a combination of technology and a combination of current market conditions. The second one is the insulation or the, it says quality of sunlight, but really I call it quantity of sunlight. Obviously, if you're at the Palmdale Airport, you're going to be getting a lot of sunlight compared to being in West LA where you don't have as much because of the fog. We're looking at 1950 there. 1950 is a combination between the high desert in Los Angeles. That's what Huron used for this. And the third one is the partnership structure, which is the access to the investment tax credits and the accelerated depreciation. In the various reports that we've seen, some have not used any of the partnership structure at all. And in this report, what they're using is as an average, a 70-30 share on that partnership structure. And that, again, we're getting access to federal dollars, which is helping to lower our costs. The biggest one by far is that hardware and installation cost. That's the key. Your answer, or my answer to you as to, do I know that in the future? They have used a variety of different costs. If you look on page 17, and this is where we wanted them to look at what those expected costs are in their stochastic analysis for the 10,000 simulations, between 14 cents and 10.2 cents. We've tried to bound those ranges. Obviously, we don't know until it happens, and that's going to be part of the power system's drive, is they're going to have to keep those costs low. They're looking at different ways you can install it. I've been out to the plant near Henderson. The installation of that is pretty simple. It basically has a guardrail I-beam that you put in. You bolt those, you bolt it, the panel to it, and then they have the inverter there, and boom. And that day I was there, which was last week sometime, we got there, council member, at 3 o'clock, and it was still producing six out of the 10 megawatts, and during the day it had gone up to 9.7. So it seems like the technology, obviously anecdotal because I was just there one day, but it seems like it works, and then it's really changing the costs. But the differences that you've seen, even DWP's analysis, we used 750 back when all of the council voted on this. We had 750 as our basis, and we assumed a 50% reduction from the participation in the tax with a third party. Now, the work that's from Huron is that the expectations are much lower. That's confirmed by the articles that I think were passed out. That seems to be the cost going forward with this new technology.
Now, I have a question for the department.
Sure.
How long has the department been engaged in this aggressive attempt at trying to get a renewable portfolio standard up, a percentage here, a percentage there of our overall portfolio? How long have you been doing that?
2003.
Since 2003?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Okay, we're now in 2009, so easily five-plus years. Give me an example of a project that is on time, on budget, and actually producing the amount of energy, renewable energy, that we expected? And don't give me, I'm at a loss for the word, but don't give me a dam project, hydroelectric. Please don't give me that because that's old school. I'm talking about this kind of stuff.
Any projects you can think of offhand?
I can.
Yeah, we'd have to get back to you with a list, councilmember.
Okay, you're presenting to this committee on all of this information of renewable energy, yet you've been engaged for over five years now, at least on some semblance of projects, such as Pine Tree is one of them. And you can't give me an example of a project or even tell me which projects are even off by how much when it comes to time it took to get them off the ground, the amount of energy they're producing, and how far off we are of our expectation, and the cost to put it together?
We wouldn't want to guess, councilmember. I think that's what it is. We could give you a comprehensive list. We'll get it to you by the end of the day. We just don't want to guess on something like that, councilmember, in terms of price and volume and all that information. We'll get it to you at the close of business today.
Okay, what you're going to need to do is get it to me in writing by the end of the day because, come on, Joe, that's a no-brainer. I'm talking to, I'm not asking you what PG&E has done or Southern California Edison or what they've done in New York. I'm talking about our department, the biggest water and power department in the country, who's got plenty of qualified, very intelligent staff at every level, and you weren't prepared to let us know how we're doing currently. And the reason why I think that's a relevant question is because we're dealing with the same department, we're dealing with the same constituency, and yet you can't give us a real, live example when you've been engaged in this for over five years.
Well, we meet weekly on the RPS, and I know I've heard of several examples where they proudly discuss projects that had come online. I just can't think of them offhand. Specific projects that were actually brought on on time and ahead of time and on budget.
Joe, look, you used to report to my committee.
Yes, sir.
When you worked for the city, now you work for the department. So you're very aware of how long we've been involved in this. You're very aware that the devil's in the details. You're very aware that if you're off by 20% on production output, that's a lot.
Yes.
And we're talking, we're talking to the voters about what they should be voting for, and this is all good stuff. I mean, everybody wants to reduce their carbon footprint, and everybody wants to feel good about, you know, being better to the environment or what have you, and this is a step in that direction. But my main point is, we need to be as accurate as humanly possible, not perfect, as accurate as humanly possible, when we ask the voters to expect that there's going to be a billion dollars plus more in revenue to the department so that we can actually do this. And when the other reports that have been either discounted or said that they're tainted or what have you, they're saying it could be two, three times that. But at the same time, I think we actually have examples before us that if actually, when you look at the cost to produce, is a lot more than we thought, and then when you look at the output, then all of a sudden, when you look at it in real dollars, it is twice as much as we thought or more, just like that mitigation project up north.
Yes, sir.
There we had a report that is not on record, that the council discussed it when they actually approved it, and yet you have a head of a department saying verbally to the city council, it's about $150 million project, everybody votes for it, then all of a sudden, years later, we realize that there was a $400 million estimate by a very respected organization that that report was never presented to the policymakers. Forgive me for being a little concerned. So I look forward to getting that in writing today. And, you know, if the chairwoman and everybody wants a copy of it, it's more than welcome. But I know I want a copy. I'm looking forward to us reducing our carbon footprint. I'm looking forward to the voters engaging and being a part of it. But at the same time, I don't look forward to the idea that we're going to have to explain things to the people, to the public, five, six, seven, eight, 10 years from now, that perhaps we should have made them abreast of it before. Maybe they'll still vote for it. Maybe they'll still want it. Maybe they'll say, you know, so it cost me an extra couple bucks a month that I didn't expect, but it's still worth it to me. But that's the honesty in us having to, you know, work in this democracy the way it is. That's the reason why we have public meetings like this. It's all in the record. It's being recorded. There's press here, there's, you know, people from the public here. They have a right and a responsibility to hear the truth, and sometimes when you hold back some information, that's not truthful. It's not a lie, but it's not truthful.
We just want to be accurate, sir. And on a question like that, I just want to make sure we're 100% accurate. And actually, we appreciate the thoughtfulness this council, this committee has given.
Accurate and forthright with the information so people can make an informed decision.
We'll do that, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas.
Just something briefly, I wanted to follow up on what Mr. Cardenas said because I think it was where I started things too. I mean, we have probably four paths we can go. We can either succeed exactly at the cost that's projected, we can succeed at a higher cost, we can succeed potentially at a lower cost. We don't know what the marketplace is going to be like, all sorts of factors. Or we can partially succeed at some cost. The partial success is, in my opinion, at least a step forward because what you have is, if we get to, instead of 1,280, if we get to 800, that's going to be probably about as big and bold, as long as it's not at the full cost. I mean, if we, for certain reasons, don't get as far in whatever we can do reduces carbon footprint, whatever we do gets us to a cheaper, long-term future. But I think the difference, you know, between what Mr. Cardenas was talking about in the past and why there's skepticism in general, I mean, we're caught between two things as policymakers, the skepticism of a past inability sometimes to execute on time and on budget, and our desire to move to a greener future. But we also recognize there's different leadership right now in place, and that's why I started with the culture change. You know, to me, there's two options. You can say, well, we haven't been able to do it in the past, so let's not do it. And that's not an option to me because we can't afford to do that. Or we can say, we have to do this, and we have to do it right. And it's going to be this committee's job, just as it's been on reliability when we went through the blackouts, to hold everybody here at this table accountable. That's what you're paid for. But to ensure that, you know, we do our due diligence with outside sources, we look at people who analyze things for a living like Huron, whose reputation is on the line on things like this. But then we also say, well, if we're pushing the envelope, don't come before us and say you can do it if you can't. And if you say you can do it, we will hold you to that, and we will help implement that. And that's where we're at right now. You know, the whole policymaking process breaks down if we can no longer take anybody at their words or new leadership or new direction. So I don't just look at the past, I look at what the present is right now. And I think it's critical for us to have that sort of accountability and critical for us to make sure that third-party analysts, not DWP, but third-party analysts, and I'm not just talking even about the ones at DWP commissions, but other people I've talked to at Southern California Edison and in Canada and in Germany and people who are doing this aggressively, people who mine silicon for a living, people who construct photovoltaic cells for a living, whether they say it can be done. We know this can be done. It's whether it will be done here in DWP, and that's what we're most focused on.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. In the interest of making sure that everyone who's filled out a speaker card, we're going to run the clock, and I'm going to just, department, step back for a second, and then let's get some folks up here to ask these, make these comments, and I'm going to ask four of them at a time. Stephen Box, Jim Stewart, Todd Martin, and Jane Paul. Stephen Box, Jim Stewart, Todd Martin, Jane Paul. Okay, Mr. Box.
Hi, Stephen Box. Good morning, morning, morning. Good points, all the way around. It's not a question of can it be done, it's a question of can we do it? And on that note, confidence in the process is an important element.
And I have before me the Huron report reduced, but we've never seen the Huron report.
And we're told to rely on it. And good plans never start with, trust me. On Saturday, we met with Mr. Nahai of the DWP, and we asked for the Huron report. He said he hadn't seen it himself, nor did he have it. He said to go to the Huron group for the report, and yet we paid $100,000 of taxpayer money for the Huron report. One would think that would come with ownership, but apparently it's not. This whole who owns the utility in the future relationship is kind of interesting, especially when it plays out that we don't even know who owns the report on the future of solar energy. Is this like a lease arrangement or a loan arrangement or who's got the report? But we should be able to see it. And so we're three weeks away from the Measure B ballot, the ballot measure, which hasn't come up. But the Huron report has come up, and we were told to wait for this before we made a decision. We were asked to keep an open mind. And I think it's really important that we're able to get information in a timely fashion so that we can rally our resources, not just financial, but intellectual, philanthropic, and advocacy resources, and that's tough for us to do if we don't get any opportunity to at least read the report and then talk amongst the community and build some confidence in what we're doing. So I'd like to make a formal request for the Huron report, and I'm trying. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Jim Stewart.
Hi, I'm Jim Stewart, the co-chair of the Global Warming Energy and Air Quality Committee for the Angeles chapter of the Sierra Club. And global warming, of course, is the top priority for the National Sierra Club. And we are really pleased that our local chapter here, our 50,000 members in LA and Orange Counties, can support Measure B. We had some of our members that were on We had some of our members that were unhappy with the rushed process, and especially those that are engaged in neighborhood councils, and we all regret that, but that's the pass. Now, we have this wonderful proposal that's on the ballot, and we're really pleased that our executive committee of our chapter approved this endorsement unanimously. We see this as not only the effort to reduce global warming, as we've already talked about, but particularly, we value the partnership with labor, and the keeping of the jobs in LA, and that, it seems to me, was not actually raised by the committee, when you were actually talking to DWP about the extra costs involved in this, what about the multiplier effect? In other words, if we have local jobs, rather than purchasing our green power from out of state or whatever, this generates a whole lot more economic activity in our city, which helps everybody, and so we're really pleased that we are able to support this, and thank you very much for your support, city council, and we hope all the voters.
Thank you, and we're not done with our discussion, we just wanted to give a break so you guys could get on the record before it was too late. That was Todd Martin, and then Jane Paul, and then Jack Humphreaville, why don't you come on up with Daniel Weisman? Take the two empty seats.
My name is Todd Martin, and I'm gonna be speaking to you as a private citizen, even though I'm a representative of the Midtown North Hollywood Neighborhood Council. You're all good people, and yet you put a ballot measure before the voters without vetting it, without communicating the financial impact, no community input statements, nothing. We are voting blindly this election on this, and I'm puzzled as to why you have not put this on the May 10th ballot, giving people time to explore it, to discuss it, to examine it, to vet it, and to communicate to the electorate, the people who elected you, more information than is presently available. I'm sitting here this morning, hearing you folks being informed about many of the things that we have never heard before, and it's confusing, so all I can say is that this whole process has been speeded up to such a degree that we're all sitting out here wondering, what the hell is going on, and what's gonna happen in the future. So I don't know that there's any solution at the moment to this, other than to perhaps delay the vote, and I also understand that regardless of how the electorate votes, that you folks have the ability to override that vote, I don't know if that's a misunderstanding that I've come across, but if that's the case, that certainly defeats the democratic process. That's about all I have to say, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Ms. Paul, and then followed by Ms. Paul, and then Mr. Humphreaville, and Mr. Weisman, and then Chris Rowe, you can come up and take his seat.
Good morning, I'm Jane Paul, I'm representing the Green LA Coalition. The Green LA Coalition is comprised of 100 environmental, environmental justice, and community-based organizations. We appreciate this committee's thoughtful analysis, and we support Measure B and the comprehensive solar program. The most urgent issue addressed by the plan is climate change, as you know. Renewable energy sources will reduce our city's use of fossil fuels, which cause global warming, and which we must utilize as soon as possible. Measure B and the solar plan does more than provide jobs to one union local, and does more than put panels on city buildings, it provides a training model and career pathways for our unemployed neighbors and friends, it also builds market demand opportunity for region-wide economic growth. The city council can support the Department of Water and Power's cost-efficient and effective implementation. We thank this committee for their leadership on climate action, and in moving Los Angeles forward in this new green economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Humphreaville is our next speaker? Good morning.
My name's Jack Humphreaville, I'm the DWP ratepayers advocate for the greater Wilshire Neighborhood Council. This is not an issue about solar, we all want solar, it's a question of how you do it in an efficient, cost-efficient manner. We don't need a charter change, we don't need to exclude 100,000 building skilled tradesmen, we don't need to exclude third-party contractors who have skills and be able to bring things like this in on time and on budget. The Huron report is not a report, it's a PowerPoint presentation. Huron is not independent, they're gonna be back at the trough again, they don't wanna be in the doghouse like PA Consulting. This PowerPoint presentation has not been approved or vetted by the DWP, it hasn't been voted on by its board of directors. Did Huron have the opportunity to review a feasibility study or an engineering study? Did they take into consideration the findings of the IEA survey that was done by PA Consulting? I don't think so. They come up with a dollar a year, a dollar a month cost, that won't even, that's about $50 million a year, that won't even cover the interest factor, more or less the academy costs, more or less the debt repayments that are associated with this project, so the dollar a year does not seem to make sense to me. It doesn't eat the tax credits, they assume a dollar-for-dollar tax credit, people who buy these tax credits are gonna want a commercial rate of return, you know, and there's only four, three or four people doing it, as opposed to about 50 or 60 before the crash, so who's gonna buy it, and what price are they gonna buy it at, I can guarantee you, they're gonna want a commercial rate of return, which is not gonna be a dollar-for-dollar return. This program that is being devised is a recipe for massive cost overruns. When they talked about the 10,000 alternatives that they looked at, this reminds me very, very closely of what they call Monte Carlo simulation, it's the same kind of stuff they did with mortgage securities and Wall Street, all sorts of games that they pulled, it's Monte Carlo, it's dangerous, and we ought to do an ordinance, not Measure B. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Humphreaville. Danny Weisman is next.
Thank you, sir, I'm sorry to see several of our board members have left this morning, or committee members, however, what I tried to do was to maybe capture in one sentence what I think I've heard you saying, and what I believe you'll be hearing the public saying. The solar energy plan has, and especially specifically, Measure B, has not yet been fully developed, and is not yet well-presented to the neighborhood councils or to the public. Part of the neighborhood council MOU agreement with Department of Water and Power is to give us adequate time to look at things, well, the neighborhood councils haven't been given that adequate time, any more than the board, any more than the city council people have. Ms. Rowe, correct me, you're probably as good an economist as we have in the room, when supply is closely approached by demand, do prices go up or go down? My accountant and economics professor would've said they go up, because demand is going to exceed supply soon. I've given you several documents, if you like PowerPoints, I can give you a PowerPoint, I did. Huron gave you a PowerPoint, I have it here amongst the documents with me. The PA Consulting company has been downplayed, even though they were given four days, they had a substantial experience, Mr. Ria, I think is his name, was at Laura Chick's presentation of the so-called IEA thing last week, and reaffirmed that they stand behind their $3.6 billion. Well, Mr. Cardenas made the point too, when have you seen a program instituted by government that didn't overrun? The one I can think of here in Los Angeles is the libraries, where 34, 35 libraries were built on time, but I have great doubts that this can be done in this DWP system.
I'm glad you said the library one, that was just the one that came to my mind too, well, yeah, because we got a Silver Lake library out of these savings, we actually got additional libraries than what was planned, so, thank you very much, Mr. Weisman, you did. Chris Rowe is our next speaker, good morning.
Good morning, I'm sorry I missed the presentation this morning, it's called Traffic.
Yes, we've heard of it.
I, my primary concern, I want you to know that I support everything that Jack said, because that's all I've heard, and Dr. Weisman, you know that I've been at meetings over, I think in your district, and with also, last weekend with David Nahai, numerous meetings. I've got a couple concerns, I think the first right now is that it's on the ballot, and that the sample ballot material has not gone out, and people are voting right now without actually knowing what is being said, what the fine details, in other words, you get a paragraph on your sample ballot in your absentee ballot. The second thing is that there was a television program called NOVA on in January called The Big Energy Campbell, and it looked at our energy situation from a state perspective, and so, the DDP is what I would call an owner and an operator, versus the Department of Energy, which is federal-wide, looks at what can we do, whether we apply solar, geothermal, or wind, or whatever, and so we've got to deal with the federal approach under Secretary Chu, and he's got his plans, and then we've got the state of California under the CPUC, and I think that besides the other documents, the PA Consulting report, the IEA, I think it is, and the Huron report, which again is just a PowerPoint, we also need to know what the DOE says in terms of what are our capabilities, what are they planning to implement, because I see the potential for three different grids of systems to go in, because as you know, Measure B only covers the one-fifth of the total LEDW program, so we could, you know, try to implement Measure B, but the reality is, we, DWP wants the whole green pathway, and so we could end up having them putting in lines that we're paying for. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris, and thank you to everybody for your comments, we have one more, Elizabeth Crawford is our next speaker. And then we'll have the department come back to the table. Good morning.
All right, good morning, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Elizabeth Crawford, Sun Power Systems, thank you again for the opportunity to speak, and thank you again for this important forum within which to discuss all of the issues that are, you know, operative in Measure B. I think that we've hit on the exact thing that needs to happen, which is informing the public, getting out what the measure is, and what it's not, and what pieces still need to be laid out, and I do think that that's where all the neighborhood councils could be so very important, is in the scoping and implementation parts of it. Again, I really appreciate the analysis that the city council does in these important issues, because again, public interests are being defended, and that's the most important thing that you can do, reliability, cost, and openness of process, and also, one thing that I don't think has been brought up here enough is, is sort of the overhanging reality that we're all facing, which is the increasingly tough regulatory environment that we all face, five or six different, you know, state and regional pieces of legislation are in process, and are being discussed, or coming down, we were just at UCLA, one of their future planning seminars, and so that absolutely changes the fossil fuel picture, and so we really cannot consider it, sort of like, is solar too expensive, frankly, zoom out a little bit, if you look at the regulatory picture, fossil fuels are simply too expensive, 72% of our fuel comes from fossil fuels inside the state and outside, and that way of life has been cut off, I think it's a Nunes's bill, I believe that's the one, and so we simply, by dictate, by the state, cannot continue doing business in the same way, and so we simply have to take that money and go to a renewable viable source, solar is the only viable source, it's not a matter of can we or should we, it's that we must, and how, and I invite the neighborhood councils, and any of the people who have objections, to please participate, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. If I can ask the department to come back up, for some additional questions, and Ms. Rowe?
I just want to ask, because the question was asked about the Huron report being available, and could you explain to us, as I would, I think that would be a document that people would want to have some access to?
I think we have, we put it online on the second of the day, we gave it to council Tuesday last week.
Not the full report, not just this?
Uh, that is the report.
That is the full report.
Okay, so there's, so it was referred to that there was other?
There are working papers and other materials, some of which is under a non-disclosure agreement, council member, but, yeah, that is the report, sir.
The sources that are cited in some of the things, like the, there's the Lazard, the supply and demand, and I actually looked at this as well, I know some of these are public, Lazard's Supply Demand Analysis, November 2008, that was one of the things that somebody else who does solar for a living had pointed out to me, to look at how supply and demand doesn't, it isn't always just as simple, Dr. Weisman, as demand and supply, there's the, you know, supply of the raw materials, there's the credit markets, there's other things that, as we see, you know, there's certainly more demand for drinks during a recession, and yet the price often goes down, depending on, you know, where folks are, there's more complicated factors at play, and I think, you know, some of those materials, if we can get any of those, you know, out, or ones that aren't necessarily non-disclosure, and in terms of non-disclosure, I'd be curious to know why, you know, some of this, if this is all stuff that we're supposed to say it's good, and it's gospel, why we couldn't see, you know, the things that it's based on in any of these. I do appreciate the sources are cited, in most of these, there's the JP Morgan analyst report, you know, I know some of these are not supposed to be made publicly available because Lazard or JP Morgan sells these, and that's how people do their analysis, and that's their business models, so I understand that, but wherever you can, I'd like to give that instruction to please give as much as possible.
Yes, that was the intent, that if there's other documentation or data that were relied upon for this document, that it be also put on the website.
And one of the things that we are gonna do is, is we're gonna ask Huron to give us a technical walkthrough on some of the pages, you know, specifically, as an example, page 18, that gets you to the 11.9 cents, that one there is tough to do unless you fully understand it, so we're having them give us a write-up, so then anybody that accesses the report can walk through that write-up and understand how you get to the 11.9 cents, I mean, I know how it's done, but it's difficult to follow, so we are getting a technical write-up so it can add more information.
Mr. Humphreaville made a comment about the dollar, you know, that it was so much per year, but am I understanding that the dollar's just a greater amount than already planned for the solar portion of our overall solar program?
Not necessarily.
I mean, overall renewable energy program.
Renewable, correct.
I knew where I was going, my head went as fast as my mouth.
We're discussing more than just the one, the unoperated piece, and it was, one of the things that was mentioned was that our solar plan cuts out all sorts of other employees that aren't our city employees represented, that was something that was very near and dear, I know, to folks here, as the solar plan is presented by you, is there work that's available for other, some may be non-represented even, but let's hope represented folks, carpenters, laborers, and others, when it's not owned and operated, the feed-in tariffs, the residential programs, et cetera?
That's what we're fully going through, is the feed-in tariff, the sun shares, all of that, and in fact, many of these things, in order for us to access, you know, specifically outside of this program, but the feed-in tariff, that would be all private participation, it's essentially a wholesale.
Local 11, IBW Local 11 has been very aggressive with its training academy, I know other unions have as well, carpenters has a great apprenticeship academy, I know that we have that in other building trades as well, are we doing anything to talk to them as we're looking at the other phases, specifically the feed-in tariffs, and potentially the residential, depending on the scale, to make sure that we're doing the green jobs component there too?
We met with about 20 different locals other than the sponsors of this, of working Californians, including the trades, carpenters, et cetera, and I think once we cleared up the fact that, you know, the 400 was not the only part of the program, and they also explained to us the relationship that they have with our union, for example, that they do in fact do work on projects that are IVEW-led, but, you know, they have always participated in projects that were led by the Department of Water and Power, so we have a very synergistic relationship with all of the other local unions.
The, there's one other thing I'm gonna say, oh, we get an instruction, Ms. Rowe, you mentioned that you haven't gotten your sample ballot yet, is that what you said?
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, I have my sample, okay, the absentee ballot.
Right.
Inside there, there's just one.
Oh, in that piece?
Paper.
Okay.
With only about a paragraph.
Gotcha.
They measure me as like one paragraph, but the big thing.
Is in the sample ballot?
The city hasn't sent them out, so people are voting absentee without having, is that a fact?
Well, the big, the big one that you get sometimes from the state?
No, probably.
Right.
I got it printed out, it's 12 pages just for Measure B, and the city sent me that yesterday, it's not been put out yet, it's the whole book that is about 40 pages or something, but just Measure B is about 12 printed pages, which I had.
I got something. I got something like that, that was my sample ballot, that had that analysis for those pages. So, I just want to check with the city clerk to see, to make sure, because not just for that, but that should be out, and we'll make sure. We'll follow up on that for you.
I contacted Secretary State Office to ask if this was a violation of the state election laws, because I feel it's wrong that people are voting without having full disclosure.
Okay. No, I got that before my absentee ballots have arrived, but I just want to find out with the city clerk what's happening in the city. So, I appreciate that point. We'll follow up on it for you. Going back to a couple of other things as well, on the other pieces, the non-Measure B aspects of this as well. How far, how are you structuring the management of these various elements? I mean, underneath you, are you going to have people who are essentially working in each one of these troughs? One person just doing residential, one person just doing feed-in tariffs, one person doing the potential Measure B, or whatever are owned and operated, whether Measure B passes or not? I'm sure we'll do that. Is that how you're structuring your operation, or is there a different way?
Okay. Well, there's going to be project ownership or program ownership. And right now, we're going to have a group of people who are managing the large utility-scale projects. Now, they're not the only ones that are doing that, because of the program managers. So, they have to reach out to engineering and construction, and they are staffing up those particular organizations right now to carry out those projects. So, it's a department-wide deployment. So, we'll have a team that's on large scale. We have a team that is on the customer-related, the SB1-type funds. Right now, we are developing the concepts of feed-in tariff and the sun shares program, and how that is going to work. And then lastly, is the utility-owned 400 megawatts. And that also, we have people who own that from a program, but it's really being deployed through extensive staff in our engineering groups and our construction groups. So, when you look at the overall department...
It's integrated.
It's integrated as a whole. And those projects are being coordinated. Right now, we are coordinating all of our solar projects at the general manager and CEO level every single week on Wednesdays. We're also on Friday coordinating the overall RPS every Friday. So, all the key management team members are participating in those meetings, taking on action items, and deploying those throughout their organization.
You know, it would be great, and we can work with Ms. Perry's office, is having an update on the renewable portfolio. I know for a while we were getting them regularly, and maybe the next meeting or so, I think it would be important to know where we are on the RPS as well.
We'll arrange that, Councilmember. We just did an update for our board, and we'll give you the same presentation.
The last report I remember seeing was, it was very ambitious of us trying to get to that goal, and there were some potential holes that we were looking at. So, I just want to make sure, as 2010 is less than a year away, so.
We'll get that calendar with the chair.
Last thing, I think we can all agree on something in this room. On the piece that doesn't have to do with the owned and operated solar piece, can you detail what process we'll be moving forward? You won't find a beef with me about some of the process. In the past, part of that was our timeline being compressed from when this was first presented to us in terms of the council. But moving forward with the piece that will be the feed-in tariff, the sun shares, the residential, what we can do to make sure that we're doing the community outreach, neighborhood council discussion, what is the process there moving forward? I don't want that process to take so long, because there is an urgency. I mean, we may not have an election, which was part of the jam in the fall. We may have the election, we may not. Depends on whether there's anybody that has a runoff or not. But the process moving forward can absolutely be improved, can go back to where we had some of the best coordination. I believe any department with neighborhood councils and other entities out there, the MOU was a model for other departments. What is the plan there? Because we can control. I don't want it so long that we get delayed, because we need to go solar quickly, but it has to be that balance between what's clear and which resounds with me in terms of there not being enough of that, partially because of time and partially because of process.
As far as the neighborhood councils are concerned, we've held about 30 presentations for neighborhood councils, 30, 3-0. We've got another 20 at least scheduled. Any and everybody who has asked for a meeting, we've tried to arrange it through our Public Affairs Group. We also...
I imagine, sorry to interrupt, I imagine those are mostly about Measure B?
We are not allowed to talk specifically about Measure B, but we do talk about Measure B as part of the Comprehensive Solar Program.
Are you also then discussing the other...
That is a focus of our discussion, is the actual comprehensive plan that includes the 1280. So, when we attend these meetings, and I'm one of the team, I think Mike and a couple others are on the team, we actually go out to the neighborhood council meetings, and we present the entire solar program, of which apart is the Measure B. And as I mentioned, we're not there to advocate. We just describe the programs and the plan, and kind of the impetus for how the plan was started. As Councilmember Rowe pointed out, really the driver was the RPS initially, and then now we're starting to see legislation like AB32 and others kind of accelerating the process, or really helping us to refocus on what the target goals are, and kind of accelerated the objectives to reduce our carbon footprint. But we are having meetings. We have had meetings, and we will have meetings right up through March 3rd. As far as the internal process, we're developing the programs, such as the feed-in tariff. But I guess the good news is, a lot of folks have talked about this being revolutionary. It is, insofar as the solar is concerned, but as far as the actual implementation, we have had, the RPS discussions are a weekly discussion. We are in negotiations today on over 620 megawatts worth of solar on the large scale. So, that's already in place. So, that's not a new thing. That's something that's been in place, and the discussions are ongoing. With regard to our customer programs, we've had our SB1 program. We've had a customer-driven, that is residential and commercial program for over 10 years, and what we're doing is enhancing those programs. And primarily, the focus is enhancing them to ensure that we allow for a greater participation level, especially at the low and moderate income levels. So, those things are ongoing. Sun shares and the tariffs are being developed. Mr. Peltola is actually heading up the development of that, because there's a big rate impact element to it. So, we're making sure that we are being fiscally sound as well as operationally.
Okay. We'd like to stay closely abreast of that. Yeah, I will leave it there. We have to get down to council, but we'd like to stay closely abreast of that. Some of the best suggestions, even on the implementation for like the residential side, for instance, I said this last time, but I'll say it again, because there are a bunch of people not here. My office has been working very hard on getting the DWP, sorry, Building Safety and Fire Department to make that an easier and smoother process, which so many installers have. We've knocked out the Building Safety, and we still have to deal with the Fire Department and get them to change that culture piece as well. But I think there's a lot of great advocates here who have had a lot of really good insights. You know, we may agree to disagree on some different things that I am not legally permitted to discuss here, but have happily discussed with folks outside City Hall. That said, there hasn't been a thing I've heard that hasn't had some improvement to how we can do business and analysis. It's whether it's a leap of faith, and what I heard in here is, it's whether you trust the DWP to do this or not. I personally don't favor one port over the other. Both reports had good things for me. The report, which was only given to me as bullet points, I asked publicly in council, and analyzed something that ultimately was not what got put on the ballot. That was helpful. Huron was very helpful as well. I don't dismiss either one of them, simply because I don't like what they say, or I really like what they say. So, that's, I think, very important as we move forward to build that faith, too.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We will keep this in committee, not take action on it today, and we will be hearing more on solar soon. Thank you all. See you in the morning.[1631.76]